Call the work session to order on A O sixty-three S version. We'll begin by going around with introductions, starting with you, Mr. Flynn.
Patrick Flynn, Assembly.
Julia, let's pick you up.
Julia Tucker, Assembly Counsel.
Ernie Hall, Assembly.
Jennifer Johnson, Assembly.
Steve Steen.
Mr. Trainey, Assembly.
I'll be Gray Jackson.
And Mr. Honeman is on the line.
I'm David Gavitt.
Yes, sir, I'm well. How about you? Yeah, we don't know how you are. You're in Florida, so keep it to yourself, okay? What I want to kind of lay out the groundwork, Ms. Tucker is going to walk us totally through the S version document this morning. And what the intention is, this document will be for public testimony on Tuesday. It is going to be continued with continued testimony. Matter of fact, we'll get a chance to kind of practice some of the practices that we're looking at in here on Tuesday evening. And it will be continued with public testimony until the meeting of May the twenty-first because of the fact that this is a new document. We do have it up online now, so people will have access to it, but we want to give time for people to get a chance to review it. So with that, Ms. Tucker, if you please would present the document, please.
So I don't have a PowerPoint. I did put together sort of a cover sheet which is also on the back table there for those of you that don't have it. What -- and so I'm going to be talking about Section Two. Section one is more or less cleanup work and just to show that the instructions to members of the public concerning public hearing and testimony are through the chair, but I'm going to focus on the proposed Section two thirty, one forty. And so each -- what I did was I divided things so that it would look and be presented as principles and then under each principle, there would be kind of a set of guidelines. And so the principles are the numbered sections, and that's what I summarized on the top of the -- or in the midsection of the single sheet. And so those five principles, and I'm just going to read them through here, are that the people of Anchorage shall have notice and opportunity to be heard. And that we know from the Charter because in Article Two of the Charter, under the Bill of Rights, Item Ten says the right that -- and so that Charter's in the beginning there. But this Charter guarantees rights to the people of Anchorage that are in addition to rights guaranteed by the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of Alaska. Among rights guaranteed by this Charter are, and Number Ten is, the right to be heard at public hearings prior to adoption of proposed six-year plans of the school system and the municipality, or approval of the annual budget, or any ordinance except an emergency ordinance is defined in it. So moving on to the principles, we have the people of Anchorage shall be -- shall have notice and opportunity to be heard. Public hearing must be continued when the published time for hearing proves insufficient to allow those present and signed in the opportunity to be heard. Then the third one is, public hearing may be continued by majority vote of the Assembly to allow time for other items on the agenda. And that happens routinely with the Assembly, even when there are fewer people perhaps there because things aren't -- haven't been quite ready, or there's an S version, or there just isn't time to -- because the agenda has gotten crowded out with things that are more time sensitive. And so that routine one is -- has come up in my experience often enough so that you want to make provision for it. It's sort of a discretionary, you know, continued public hearing, and the majority vote is just how the Assembly goes about doing that. And then I'll talk about that a little bit more in contrast to Number Two. Okay, then when sign-in is required, it will be fairly implemented, and then the time management of public hearing testimony is viewpoint neutral. So those are the principles that I was working with. And then the guidelines, you can just move right through the ordinance for the guidelines that are sort of organized under each principle. And for those guidelines, I just drew from Present Code, Charter, Roberts Rules, and Assembly meeting routine. So, you know, oftentimes what happens will happen, no code is going to cover every circumstance. And I don't think this code is going to cover every conceivable circumstance either. But what happens is that somebody will come up, and then what Counsel's job, what we do is we look at all the things that I mentioned here. We'll look at, if a question comes up on Assembly procedure, we're going to be looking at the code, we're going to be looking at the Charter, we're going to be looking at Roberts Rules, and, you know, sometimes we have to roll it all the way up to Title Twenty-Nine, and then we give you an answer. And sometimes we sort of know what it is because we looked it up before, but not always are we going to agree exactly on the procedure and so the -- or the exact process, how to do it. So this sort of beforehand kind of ties in at least what we're looking at to cover all the circumstances that have, you know, had -- to at least assemble the various pieces of circumstances that could come up and then walk, you know, walk through them.
Julia, if I may, let the Director reflect that Ms. Podolski has joined us. Thank you.
And then before we get into more detail about it, the third thing about this is in Section Three, my -- the Section Three would provide for a provisional adoption for a ninety-day period to allow the Assembly time to work with it and with themselves prior to final adoption. So then any additional things that I haven't thought of and that haven't been quite into play yet could be, you know, could be worked in. And then it may be that what, you know, what we actually need is less code and more principles and guidelines, and we'll just have to see if that works out. You know, we have two new members in the Assembly, the Clerk's office and my office, work to do, to try and prepare some different orientation materials. And from time to time, we look at guidelines. I know before I came here, there were, from the Legislative Services Office, a set of Assembly guidelines that helped Assembly members and new members come in and do things. So I also tried to keep that in mind. So some of these things are not going to be new to many people on the Assembly, it's just that they're assembled, so to speak, in one place. The things that -- to my way of thinking, these principles and the guidelines would mandate certain practices. One is that sign-in must be implemented when there are too many people to testify at the allotted time and public hearing is continued. Yes?
Good question for you. When agenda setting is done on a Monday, you could move something that's a big item to the end of the agenda for whatever reason. That limits the amount of testimony you can have on that item. So how do we stop when that happens?
Well, if something is moved to the end of the agenda so that -- and the problem is that you have, as I -- I'm just repeating your question. So you have an item that's moved to the end of the agenda, and the agenda continues on until ten-thirty, and you have a room full of people who patiently waited to testify. This says that you're going to have to continue public hearing. And when you do that, you need to implement a sign-in if it's going to be -- if you need to continue the public hearing. Then the question for the Assembly is going to be, that next public hearing, is it going to be reserved for these people, or is it going to be continued as an unreserved public hearing? And if they're going to reserve it, two things have to happen. You have to have a sign-in, and you have to note, state that it's going to be reserved for those people. Does that help you answer?
The reason I ask is because if our emergency has our chambers posted for how many people could be in there. So it's conceivable, it's with the Thirty-Seven, we had people in the Marston Theater area that never got in to Assembly chambers. So are you envisioning the clerk sending the sign-up sheet down there, too?
Right. The clerk asked me about this, too, on the mechanics. And what I responded is that, yes, that's going to include everybody who appeared that night to testify, whether they could fit into the Assembly chambers or not. I mean, on purpose, we, my understanding is, we opened up the Marston. So sign-up tables would be set up by the clerk so that people would have a chance to sign up because when the vote is taken, under the process envisioned here, if a vote is taken to reserve the continued public hearing for people who showed up at the initial public hearing, then you have to make an announcement, and you have to allow people to sign up.
Chairman, let me follow this. One more question, and I'll cut this short because I know I'm occupied with chat. With Thirty-Seven, there were people that could not even get into the Marston Theater. They were outside, they couldn't find parking. Would any of those people, just tell them, I'm sorry, you weren't around here at the time? I'm trying to plan for, I mean, we only had this happen three times that I can think of. Photoradar, Sixty-four, and now Thirty-Seven. But there were some people that came to testify that never were able to get into the Marston Theater. It was that clock. So what do you tell the people that could not get into the building?
So it's by ten-thirty at night, when the item comes up, we, you envision that we would still have people who were circling
Yes.
the Marston and unable to park anyplace and unable to come in.
It happened with Thirty-Seven.
Yeah. Well, I think that with any public, this is just me talking to you, but to me, with any public testimony, they have to be present to testify, and they'd have to be present to sign up.
I'll talk more in the debate. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Take the way it's set up in here, we continue the sign-up sheet as well. We just don't close it, so it would be continued through the next meeting if we're unable so that they've got a chance to get access. Ms. Johnson and then Ms. Steele.
I have two questions. One in the weeds. If the clerk has this sign-up sheet, are we looking at having IDs checked? Or, I mean, I'm -- because you're saying that, to follow through on Mr. Trainey's, you're saying that they need to be present. Is that something that would be legitimate to require, or is it something?
I wasn't envisioning IDs checked. But, you know, I think it's very difficult to have that. I think that when people sign up, you call their name.
Yeah.
They sign up for, you know, for themselves. I suppose if there's some reason to doubt that they're not the person
I guess, yeah.
that they are, but I think that it may be a better question to ask the clerk, but this doesn't envision an ID check.
Then the other is more global. And it's with your, with the principle, the number-one principle as far as the notice and opportunity to be heard. And this is where the global issue I'm wondering about because other legislative branches, the state, the federal government, I think other municipalities, how that voice is to be heard varies. Most, a lot of your legislative branches have that option to be heard. It can be in writing, it can be telephone, it can be email, and it can be in person. And so do we -- and I know what we're trying to do here is come up with a policy for in-person, but it's limited in other legislative arenas. I mean, you know, federally and state, they actually, you know, they invite people to be heard in a public hearing, which I don't want to see us go there, but I'm just sort of saying, as we're looking, you know, at the 21st century, the right to be heard has changed, you know, there's now more ways to get a hold of us than there were in the 18th century. And are we compensating for that? Or even as code, as this charter was written, I'm just wondering that. And I'd be interested, you know, in the ASCLU's response to that, too, just, you know, what is the right to be heard? How is it, you know, what are we talking about?
Well, under this proposal, and I think also under the initial version, if you wanted to limit participation to written form only, then you can have a code amendment to what we have on the books now and what either one of these will be proposed, and it may take a charter amendment.
Yeah. And I'm not sure if I, I'm just throwing that out there. I mean, I'm not sure how many legislative branches can -- and really, it is a form of filibustering, you know, where the public can actually filibuster a legislative branch. And it doesn't happen in the state, it doesn't happen federally. I think it doesn't happen in a number of municipalities. And I'm just, I'm not sure if it's right or wrong, I'm just sort of throwing that out there.
Mr. Steele.
A couple of questions. The public hearing may be continued by majority vote of the Assembly to allow time for other items on the agenda. Is that the only reason? Or can public testimony be continued by majority vote? I mean, so you can do that for any reason or only this reason stated?
For any reason.
And I presume the list can be, can remain open at the discretion of the Assembly as well, should the motion be made to continue the list to the next day or to the next meeting time or whatever. So I presume closure of the list is also an action.
Right. I think that the way this is written, if you're going to continue the public hearing, then that takes the vote of the Assembly. So that's routine, just like it is now. I put it in here because it occurred to me that the public may not understand that that is a routine thing that can happen. And it's generally because there's too many, you know, it's just not timely to take it for whatever reason. Under this proposal here, if the Assembly was not only going to continue the public hearing, but they wanted a sign-up and have it be reserved, that would take an action. Absent that action, the continuation is open. Okay?
The continuation is open for the people that are already signed out?
No. What this says is, if you want to have a limit, then you, as the Assembly, need to vote that limit.
Eighty-seven, okay.
And otherwise, the default is going to be that you're going to have a continued public hearing, and you're going to allow everybody who shows up that next time because that, in, if we take the three instances that Mr. Trainey was referring to aside, it often happens that, in my experience so far here, that you may not have enough people. You may, the word may have gotten out already that you were going to continue this item, and so people don't show up because they know it's going to be a continued public hearing. It's not always, but that can happen. And so they'll be, we're going to continue this hearing, they'll make the announcement ahead of time, there won't be an instigation of a sign-up at all because there isn't any intent. We're not in that filibuster situation that Jennifer was talking about. You haven't, you know, you want the testimony to be ripe. Mr. Trainey's chair, Debbie Ossian's chair, Mr. Hall's chair have told people, you know, you can testify tonight because we have to open public hearing if it's announced, but we are going to have this change, we're going to have this, we're going to have that, we're going to have another opportunity for you, and if you testify tonight, you're not going to be able to testify again. And so it's then, and the choice. And the other thing that this does is it makes it clear that you're allowed, that the Assembly's allowed to, in the public interest, to make an announcement ahead of the time that it comes on the order of the agenda. Because the dilemma has been that if, that if an item on the agenda is down here on the agenda, but you already know up here that you intend to continue that public hearing, well, the motion hasn't been made, it hasn't been approved, it takes six votes, so how are you going to announce up here that something's going to happen before it actually happens, even though you know that it's by unanimous consent, everybody knows that they can't do it? So this says, yeah, you don't, it's not going to be getting the cart before the horse to make the announcement that the intent is.
What this says here, though, is that public hearing must be continued when the published time for the hearing provides, is insufficient to allow those, if there's a sign-up list, signed in the opportunity to be heard. So could there be an action about the words that says "and" continue, I mean, how do you set limits for the list?
Well, you're looking at my summary instead of, you're looking at my summary, I think, instead of, and so, and so let's talk about the summary. The summary, that summary, this must be continued is the time that Mr. Trainey was talking about. You have a room full of people. They haven't signed in yet. Okay, they didn't know there was going to be a sign. That's the, that's the, that's the situation. And so you have maximum capacity in the Assembly chambers, you got maximum capacity in the Willis Marston. And what you, what this requires you to do is to continue public hearing. And if you're going to have that public hearing, that continued public hearing, limited to the people who are waiting, if you're going to have it reserved for those people who did show up, then you, the Assembly has to allow those people there to sign up up through the end of the meeting, you know, at least.
Seems to me there has to be a declaration of some sort.
There is a declaration. That's exactly what this is. It's a motion and a declaration, and it allows the clerk to tell people that they need to sign in. And then, as Mr. Trainey talked about, if it turns out that, you know, that there's many more out there who are trying to get in, then it doesn't, none of, none of the new provisions require a reservation. It just says if you are going to reserve it, you have to have advance notice, and you have to.
It seems to me that under this, there's a lot of flexibility in terms, but we have to take the appropriate actions in terms of voting and sign-ups or.
I try, we tried to build in as much flexibility.
Mr. Flynn, and then Ms. Gray Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I get the distinct expressions that have worked on to the last hour.
Do I have a typo?
A few. Apologize and bad to be a little bit picky. Page three, line seventeen. I think it should be public hearing or public hearings. And following up on Mr. Steele's comment, I think we should simply delete the clause to allow time for other items on the agenda. I think that's not relevant. That may be the case, it may not be the case. Same page, line forty-seven. I think we have accept, we mean accept. And I'm just getting this, so I apologize for not being all sudden these ahead of time. Page four, line forty-seven, speaking to your point, Ms. Tucker, that we cannot presume that an item will be postponed or continued just because we think it will be, and therefore I think on line forty-seven, the way it's sort of likely between "or" and "will," or is expected to be, or something, as opposed to "will be," since the majority simply could decline to continue public hearing. May, well, it's always may.
Yeah. Particularly right now.
So just some.
Ms. Gray.
You don't.
Yeah, that's all.
Ms. Gray Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of my concerns with the original document was that whoever was present for the public hearing and signed up were the only folks who got to sign up. And I think I heard you mention that that's not the case anymore, but I couldn't find it in the ordinance. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, you might have to tell me again what.
I want to find in this ordinance where it allows folks who weren't able to be at the public hearing when it opened that first evening, who weren't able to be there and sign up, I want to see where it allows folks who come to continue public hearing.
Page four, Section X.
Excuse me?
Page four, Section X.
Do you want me to finish my comments? Thank you. I wanted to find in the ordinance where it allows folks who were not at the initial public hearing and had the ability to sign up, who come to the next public hearing and can sign up again. See what I said?
Yes. So if, if at that first public hearing, a sign-in is implemented, and the announcement is made that it's reserved, then it would take Assembly, and that's done by majority vote of the Assembly, then the next, then the next public hearing is going to be limited to the people who signed up at the first hearing. But it can't be unless the Assembly does those two things, instigate a sign-in and say that it's going to be reserved. And then what we spoke about here is, okay, so what happens if those two things happen, and then the Assembly has evidence that people weren't even able to come in to sign up? Then that would take Assembly action to open those.
To allow people to sign up. And see, that's the problem that I'm having because it depends on the makeup of the Assembly. You know, it really does. You know, some may feel that, well, we need to give everybody an opportunity, even if they couldn't make it the first night to sign up, and others may feel too bad, you know, and so that's the issue that I'm having with the vote of the Assembly to allow the sign-up sheet to be continued.
Yeah, I think that, you know, part of the problem that I saw in some of the recent ones that Mr. Trainey mentioned is that it's a little bit different here, is that as soon as the chair recognizes, or the clerk recognizes, that there are going to be too many people to allow public hearing that night, then, then something has to be done then, so you're not left at the, at the chaos of not having everybody come in. What this doesn't do is, and what this one doesn't do and what Present Code doesn't do, is say that you have more than one public hearing for any item except for the budget. And so you have one public hearing. And it gets to be continued as the Assembly has it in its discretion. But this says if the Assembly's going to use its discretion ever to limit it, they have to do those two things. And that's, and that's what it does. So in your situation, does it say that the Assembly has to continue the public hearing more than once and keep the sign-up open? No. They can, but, but, and, not but, but and, they can institute, if there's a continuation and another continuation, they were both open. They're not reserved, but the Assembly gets to the point where they work through and they kept the sign-up sheet open for the next one and the next one, and then they say, okay, we're going to, we're going to, we need to wrap this up. Then even in that circumstance, they Then even in that circumstance, they, if they're going to make the neck, if they're going to close down public testimony, they still have to give everybody who signed up at that last one the opportunity to testify. They just don't have to, if by majority vote, the Assembly doesn't have to keep the subsequent list open.
Right, and I can follow up, Mr. Chairman. But, and, you know, correct me if I'm wrong in understanding what you're saying. If folks were not able to make it to the first public hearing, okay, and sign their name on a sign up sheet, when they come to the following continued public hearing, the only way they can sign their name on that sign up sheet is if the Assembly by majority votes agrees to allow that to happen, correct?
That's right.
Okay. That's, that's where I have to, thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Trainee?
Julia, on your five principles, item four, fairly implemented, you also get it on page, page three of five. Item four, when a sign is required, it would be fairly implemented. Would you do me a favor and by Tuesday define what you mean by fairly implemented? Because I don't see that phrase being defined in here. So I would like to see you define it, because I can ask two attorneys, I've got two here, ask him what fairly implemented is and ask you what it is, I'll get a different answer. So I'd like to know, if we're going to adopt this, what that actually means from writing, because I don't want it to vary from chairman to chairman.
The way that I approached it, and I'll just tell you now, is that, is that the, each principle had guidelines, and that told you how it was going to be fairly implemented.
You need to define how you mean it for your speech, that's not all our assuming right here. I don't need you to do it now, Julia, I just need it.
No, I'm just telling you that the approach is a little bit different. So I didn't do it as an ordinance with, with defined terms. What I had is, and, and then the Assembly can, can decide what other guidelines they want to include as fair, as fairly implemented. But, but instead of saying, okay, the Assembly is going in an ordinance, giving the Assembly the obligation of coming up with guidelines on what's going to be fair implementation, I just gave you some guidelines. And then those got, the way this works is that those guidelines, that, that is your definition of fairly implemented. That's how that works.
Reason I ask is because somebody's going to take us to court and some attorney's going to look at that and say it's arbitrary or gracious, you don't define it. Just happens time after time, Julia. Thank you. Julia, one other thing, what would stop somebody from signing a bunch of people up saying, hey, my name's Obie Gray Jackson, sign me up to testify. I come back two minutes later, hey, my name's whatever it is, sign me up to testify. You said we're not going to check ID. So how would the clerk know you're not who you're saying you are?
Well, I see, I see, I think having worked any number of counter jobs, that one or two might get by, you know. But if the same person keeps coming back to the sign up table and using different names, that's going to be pretty obvious. And so I think that the risk of, that is minimal compared to the imposition on everybody doing ID checks.
Thank you. I've got one question to keep.
Oh, yeah, we do.
Oh, damn it. Mr. Balski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Julie, is there a way, just brainstorming here, some of their concern, or some issues that were raised, is there a way to trigger, if the Assembly takes the action to limit testimony, to have the sign up sheet, is there a way to structure it where it would automatically trigger, like, maybe there's a 48-hour period where people can go into the clerk's office and sign up?
I don't think that there's any, any, I think that that's a different approach. And so in the situation that, where the Assembly is, is overwhelmed with people and there is the high likelihood that there are people who couldn't even get in to sign up, that that could be something that the Assembly figures, that it doesn't really matter if they were present to testify on that first date, we want to have a sign up sheet. Because, you know, the, the, if, if the intent of the Assembly to, to impose a sign up and a reservation on the next hearing is for those people who were present, then obviously going to the clerk's office within 48 hours is no indication that they were present at the, at the Assembly. So why have the sign up in the first place?
Well, I hear what Ms. Johnson had made the point about, you know, there could be techniques and put in place to kind of filibuster, you know, Assembly action. But my point, as a, as a body, you know, if we're trying to hear the public and we're just trying to make it where there's a definitive amount of people that, okay, we can't go on with this issue forever, isn't there a way that we could, I mean, I hear what you're saying about you should be present to testify, but what's really the goal? It's the goal to hear people. So I, I would think there's got to be a way where we can implement it, where anybody who's circling the building or anybody who wants to testify on this issue, there's a certain amount of time, sign up, that's it. I mean, I don't understand how we can't implement that into this ordinance somehow. You see where I'm going, kind of?
Well, I do. I think that that's a, that's, I don't think that, I don't think this ordinance does that. Because this ordinance is based on a situation where, where the, how it, how, how public testimony comes to an end in this ordinance is that, is that the Assembly is free to continue it, to get as much public testimony.
Right.
For the people who came to the call.
Well, I hear you.
The call, the call to the public testimony, there will always be people who can't make that, some, it's inconvenient. They're out of town, they have a hair appointment, they play hockey, they play soccer, they, their kids play soccer, and they can't make it to that public hearing. And the Assembly doesn't keep items open to make sure that it fits in, because the Assembly has to, as Ms. Johnson was talking about, it has to go ahead and keep things doing. I don't think that there's, I'd have to really think about whether having a, a preordained sign up and have that take the place of people being able to come, because that may be an adjunct, but still, if people, they didn't hear about the sign up, they showed up. Now you're going to say, no, you didn't sign up. And so, you know, you, the right is to testify, not to, not to sign up. So my example is, I get 49er benefits on Alaska Airlines if I sign up. That's not this kind of right. You have the right to be present and testify. And so to instigate what you're talking about has the implication of being, okay, my right's limited if I didn't make it to the sign. Now, now not only do I have to make it to public hearing, I got to make it to the sign in this 48-hour period. So that's why I'm hesitant, that, that isn't the approach of this.
Well, thank you for the paraphrasing.
But it's, but it's, you know, it's a good idea. I mean, we had, I had.
I think I've had the box a little.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Mr. Trainee?
Nobody, no.
I've got you in the queue, Paul. Mr. Trainee?
Thank you.
Mr. Honeman?
Yes, sir, I've been listening, I, I just got a copy, the S version, look through it. As I look through the information, particularly on section four, when sign in is required, and as I go through the entire ordinance, see where you move where the T and the chair is making a gendered going. And of course, I think it's nice to be able to put in direct, not using hand addressing to make what with this result. But my question is, is that it seems like we're going through a whole lot of information here, or inserting a whole lot of information, in essence, in a way to, to present limitations. It seems to me that we already have in our current code with, with, notwithstanding, I guess, what I call, how do we change it works to the chair and that sort of stuff? Why would we even want to, you know, unless we as a body determine that it's an emergency or the administration requests and, and states the emergency, there's, there should be no reason that I'd be willing to make the decision, a tough call, if you will, if it, if we've heard enough information from the public or, or we vote to continue. I mean, I, I'm, I'm difficult in finding the public, this just seems like we're putting a whole lot of information on a piece of paper that says, this is how we're going to keep you from testifying. And I, and I just don't like the feel of it, frankly. It's, it's just opinion. And.
You done, Paul?
I guess his testifying is limited, wasn't it?
Yeah.
I guess he must be. Miss up in the side of the question.
Miss Tucker?
Well, I didn't hear, hear a question there, but I, I think that the, that the, that there's a gap now. And the gap now doesn't provide for, doesn't provide for advance notice that a continued public hearing will be closed to the people who weren't there. So the, the right, in my view, goes to the people who showed up and testified, and it can be, I mean, showed up to testify, and, and that's when you have, that's why you have the public notice to the people who, you know, to let them know that we're going to have public hearings. There isn't a, a right to a continued public hearing. And so you have to figure out how you're going to build that in, because there are many times when you're going to have a public hearing, a continued public hearing. And then in that circumstance, when do you get it cut off? You, you know, are you, is the, right now, there's a gap in the Assembly, from chair to chair has varied. Some chairs have chosen to never cut it off and encouraged basically a filibuster. Others have said, okay, we're, we've heard, you know, we've had all these days, we've had extra days, and so we need to bring it to a close because this is time sensitive, and that's left people who had no notice when they got there that it was going to be closed to, to, to them. And so this has, tries to, to create some, some parameters for the Assembly to know that when people, when absent a limitation, it's going to be open. And if you're going to do a limitation, Bernie Hall asked that, you know, if it's a, if it is a limitation, if it is a reservation, the body has to vote on it, not the chair, not one person saying, okay, I've decided we're going to cut it off here. That that really needs to be, whereas normally, the chair makes those calls now and has. That's why there's been, been a variation in how it, in how it's been affected.
Mr. Steele?
Yeah, so, so basically, we're extending the right. I mean, we have to take positive action in order to close it off.
Right. I mean, that, you know, instead of having to be that, that you can close it off, there, you have flexibility here, but the two things that aren't flexible is that the public has to have notice and opportunity to be heard.
Sure. So it has to be reasonable.
And so, yeah.
You have to start a list early.
You have to start a list before.
If you're going to close it off and reserve it to that.
You have to start a list, and then, and then you have to vote to reserve that list. And then, and then ask, and then, and always it's going to have to be reasonable and not arbitrary.
Mr. Trainee?
Julia, when I think of only three instances where somebody's business began happening and was an issue.
Yeah.
We deal with thousands of these issues every year. It seems like we're going to train, change everything for the three instances that I can think of where we've had an ability to deal with all the people there to testify. Because you know, we go through hundreds of things.
Right, we, we do, but, but what, but, what Barbara Jones, in a, in a different, as clerk, in a, in a different context, has, has talked to, to Assembly members, and, and I've been there, where even though it becomes routine to the Assembly, you go through it, the public doesn't necessarily understand what you're doing. And so an example of that is when, is when you waive reading and, and the public thinks that you dumped the item. So we use terms like postpone indefinitely and things like that, that, that especially for a veteran like you, that it comes at, it comes just like this. But even on, even though we had three major ones, those are not the only ones, where just in my eight-year tenure, the, I've been asked with the municipal tree, has been asked questions about it. And so some chairs are going to be more familiar with one of its rules than others, some are going to know how to, to process it and what's been done in the past. But now we're faced with, we have two or three different precedents now, big ones of what we've done in the past. And so it's sort of time, when, when you have a conflict of precedent, then, you know, it may be time for the Assembly to take a look at some guidelines and, and practice working through them, even if you never put them into ordinance.
Thank you, Julia.
Do you have one else? Mr. Chairman? Uh, yes, Mr. Gray. It is an opportunity. There, as a, as a practical matter, obviously this means that there'll be a lot more hearings or a lot more hearing opportunities, and the Assembly will manage that through their regular agenda or by adding special meetings. So there's that, but, but there's only two scenarios that I can think of where there may be some bumps in how this works, and that is with respect to the budget and with respect to what goes on the ballot because of the timelines. The budget side, there's a scenario where you're expected to adopt a budget by year end. If you don't adopt a budget by year end, in theory, it's a shutdown. We've talked about this before. It didn't used to be the case until the amendment some years ago about whose budget would come into play.
Talking about the TESCHI training.
Right, exactly. So, so right now, you have to continue to deliberate and work until you actually adopt a budget. So in a scenario where your hearings are pushed out beyond December 31 and there's no budget adopted, then either A, there's a shutdown, or B, you're going to have to look at this brand new thing for the city, which is some sort of continuing resolution like you might see at the federal level. How that would work, what it would look like, I'm not sure. But it may be manageable, something to keep in mind. The second scenario might be a little bit more tricky, and that is, you have a deadline to get your ballot props done, so you have the ballots printed and get them to the elections. In a scenario where you have a very hot topic, lots of interest, lots of people, both sides of the issue coming out, people opposed to seeing it on the ballot have an opportunity to prevent it by making sure they stack the queue enough so that that deadline runs. Because typically, you're waiting till the last public hearing opportunity to finish up the ballot items. And I forget that last meeting in January can usually is or maybe it's the first meeting in February. So there's a scenario where there's the potential to, to see some abuse of your process, because you're locked in now to potentially having these continued hearings, and you may not be able to get enough special meetings in that narrow window to get it done. So just something to keep in mind.
Ms. Johnson?
So to follow up on that, and, and back to, you know, my, my question, the opportunity to be heard, and those are two time-sensitive items. When isn't the responsibility of the elected officials to manage their legislative duties? I mean, this is where I see, you know, you, you come to a, the rub, and so how, I mean, one of the things I was thinking as you were talking, you could, with a budget or a time-sensitive thing, say, public hearing is cut off this date and we will receive written testimony up till this date. But I, I mean, I guess, this, this is where I'm flummoxed. I'm now taking on Debbie Ossian as well.
You got to dig your river, huh?
I mean, how, do you have any case, I mean, is there anything to address this?
Yeah, I can give you a, a quick, easy answer. An opportunity to be heard is not necessarily always a guarantee that can be heard. In our scenario, because we provide, we have written seminals and other avenues, the fact that you don't get to publicly testify isn't necessarily by itself a violation. But as Julia's indicated, you've got to manage that in a way that's fair and content neutral. So there may be scenarios where you could say, look, I'm only going to take 10 hours of testimony, or we're going to take action and close public hearing at this date because there's a timeline. But I would hesitate to use that, except in the very narrow scenarios, such as you've got to get it to the ballot one way or another. And so the Assembly needs the opportunity to vote on this issue, is it going to go to the ballot or not? You have to close it out in that time period. You have to close it out in that time period.
So you, you would see it as something that would end up into an assembly debate where at some point the assembly takes the responsibility to either do it or not do it as a majority?
Well, you're trying to balance this, again, I just raised it as a, something to think about, I don't have a national favor, but if you are going to go down this path of allowing a sign-up list and the number of people wanting to testify to be determinative of when you get to close the hearing, that's potentially gonna bump up against this deadline. And you're gonna have to figure out how to manage that.
Yes, but that's our job.
That's, I mean, to me, that's, we're elected for this job, so.
And we need to allow for adequate public hearing. And that doesn't mean forever, but it means reasonable public hearing. And if we, if we can anticipate what the issues are, we can count for that. If we can't anticipate them, there's gonna be some long nights and early mornings.
One, one crazy idea is if you have groups that are on either side of the issue and you have a good working relationship with your, their leadership, you could say, this group, an hour, two hours, whatever it is, this group will be here an hour, two hours. Bring your best people to speak to the issues, let's hear from them.
Which is.
If there's not enough time to hear from every single person else to give you.
Which has been tried in these other cases, I mean, and, and it fell apart.
Very insipid.
Any other questions? As I said, this is open for public testimony Tuesday. It is going to be continued to the end of the month, to the 21st. And I will be very open to the desires of the body. We've still got enough questions running amongst us. We may wanna do another work session if necessary. I'll be open to doing that. Mr. Trainee?
We could put that five minutes left, can we hear from anybody that's here that wants to talk to us on this? I don't wanna go over the 12, but we've got five minutes left.
Yeah, and Mr. Mittman slipped out on us, so we'll give him a chance. But, yeah, at Mr. Trainee's request, we, we are limited to five minutes, but any, any comments from the group?
Joel Hall with AFL-CIO. I don't understand how you can, how the public's supposed to understand what your intentions are on the first evening. So the first evening is unclear to the public what their expectations are. They show up, but you don't know whether you have, whether you have to show up because you're gonna have to sign a list or not, because that decision's gonna get made at the meeting. So from the public's perspective, it's as clear as mud what's gonna happen at the meeting because it's completely up to you guys' decision and there's no way to tell, to tell any group of people. It's still not a standard that's transparent to the public. So I just wanna put that out there because it's, it's not clear to me when you'd make the decision. It's open unless you guys decide, but you won't let us know. We have no, it's still not clear.
So would you have a suggestion on how you could, how you could do that? I mean, would we have this procedure for every single public hearing? Or how would you suggest we fix this?
Well, you won't wipe the way I think you should fix it, which is there shouldn't be one. I think there's a difference between a budget and a ballot initiative for things that happen every year, right? Those are stat, those are manageable events. Okay, so I, I will take those off to the side. But an ordinance that comes out that hasn't been, there's no process by which the public gets access to any of the information the input assembly discussed before an ordinance is on the table. So when it comes out, it's, you're gonna, you're, you're debating it in real time, right? There's no way that the public kind of weighs in ahead of time, and especially if they've been purposefully excluded from that process. So in those instances, it feels like there should be, I don't believe there should be a limit. I know that you guys don't want a public filibuster, but from the other side of the coin, it feels like if you have the majority of the assembly at any given time, you could cut off public debate any day of the week you wanted to, if you just didn't wanna talk about it anymore. That doesn't feel like a healthy process either. So it feels like it goes too far to the side of the majority having too much control and the public not knowing, in my mind, as the public, you should err on the side of giving us more opportunities and not fewer. And the sign-up is a fewer scenario. So I don't believe that the sign-up should ever be the case.
But it, it, I'm just saying.
Let me. Mr. Richardson?
Cheryl?
Oh. I'm very concerned that we're trying to fix something that's bent but not broken. We've had two major instances in the last few years where the testimony has been a problem. That's when we were blessing folks in from La Silla, and now when we shut down a hugely controversial discussion and problem. So that's twice. I'm very concerned about limiting debate, which I, I feel this is, I feel like sometimes we actually offer information to you guys. And I think it's best to have the chair make these decisions. We know that we often take sides with our majority and minority status on the assembly. And that's just another screen, I think, for giving the opportunity to shut down debate testimony. I'm, I'm gonna throw in a 30-second pitch. What we need on top of this discussion of testimony is a public participation policy and practices in the municipality because sometimes it's just terrible. Sometimes it's absolutely great, sometimes it's completely inept. So I would ask that we launch that effort ASAP. But thank you for allowing us to.
Anyone else? If they have not, we'll return.